That's priority.
So, so I just more than what you wanted.
Which is right, which is right around nap time. After you do the Christmas run, four o'clock is right around nap time.
So, what I love about.
So there were five runners and he's running as one way? From bashy to very long.
Yeah. Pretty fast. Yeah. And, and so there was this chaos. It was really sick. Head down the table. You know, it's like you have to leave that. When it comes to the lights on that really low. I think they're like.
Yeah.
It takes, takes you ten minutes to get through.
Yeah.
The highs of all of the cars.
Right.
It's a funny. Okay, so I see three. Then he's doing this. He was born in. When we live in, you know, seven minutes away. We're eleven, we're nineteen. We may.
So, Mike Girardi in for Jordan. That was past week. Definitely, Mike had the shot. I curse that, um, Wolfendal High School. The war in Milford. He came because he won.
What?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He came because he bought a ticket and got free ski tickets.
Going now? No, 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 I don't.
Yeah. He still got some though.
I got three. Two. Five and three.
Yeah.
So Paul, are we expecting more? Do I expect? Seven forty-five. Okay, so you need one associate. I assume I didn't remember my person. I mean, she wasn't here last time. So she could be. So we're in. Was that where you were last time?
Yes.
We were. Yeah, we were.
All three options, right there.
So when we, uh, we have a rotation, we put them on?
The last time everyone voted.
Yeah, we alternated. So you're gonna need, you're gonna need one with L this year. You still, you're gonna need one associate. I haven't seen one yet. Okay, yeah, so you're gonna need. But you prefer, but then you need one there after. Yeah, so. Want to roll the circle? Yeah, so maybe you and I go for the first one and then, you know. We're gonna issue out there. We have issue out there, which can then will just continue the cycle of that one. If he doesn't say.
I don't know. Last time it was like, I couldn't see the, um, plaque. So I'm like, okay, I don't know. Voting went so. Do the ball call? That's why I use it for me to try. I could try to do a ball call.
You're good? Tell me when. All right, good evening, everyone. If we could all open the meeting by rising to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, equal and just as for all.
Thank you all. The first item on the agenda is the continued public hearing of fifty-five fifty-seven Ferber Avenue. There is no need to reread the notice, Mr. Clerk, so you're off the hook on at least one of these.
I'm gonna get a lot of practice a little later.
These are, these are nice short ones, though. I think. Short notices, I meant. I didn't mean hearings. Ms. Jacobs.
Hi. Good evening. I'm his office boarder. I'm here in behalf of the petitioner. My address is forty-five Osgood Street, Methone, Mass. Last time we were here, some of the residents had concerns and a few questions. The first one was the water runoff from the proposed driveways. So we addressed that in the new plan, um, by putting, uh, drainage trenches at the end of both driveways, as you can see in the plan, um, at the end of the driveway for the pre-family and at the end of the driveway for the single family, uh, to catch any runoff from the paved areas. We also reduced the square footage by fifteen percent on the driveway. Uh, I think one of the board members, I think it was Michael, wanted us to look at that, so we did that. We reduced the, uh, the driveway by up to fifteen percent. There was also a request from neighbors about fencing in the rear. So we actually have two markings. We have a fence that runs down the side separating a single from a pre-family. And it runs all the way along the back and then up the side, um, at a height of six feet and then reduces like four at the end. So those were the, I believe, the major concerns and requests from the residents here and the board and myself and Brendan Locken, who's here, would be more than willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, thank you very much. For the notes that I took last time, so I thank you very much for your attention to detail, your complete attention to detail and addressing them. Well, of course, anything from the, from the board comments, questions, ideas, whether they're left over from last time or anything new that you've generated in the last month?
I think you touched on all the business.
Yeah.
All right, it doesn't sound, doesn't sound like there are any questions from the board. Is there anybody, before, before I make you give up the, uh, the podium there, is there anything else that you wanted to say? Otherwise, I'm gonna ask for a public comment. Is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing and hearing none, the ball is back in our collective court. So I don't think, just to reiterate to the board, I don't think that I have any, anything additional to ask.
There's been no other changes to the structure, I assume. It's not exactly the same.
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded by Ms. Jacobs. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No. Public comment is closed. The board shall deliberate on the matter. Any thoughts, folks?
I think I'm fine with it. It would've been nice if we had gotten some input from the neighbors who were here last time and had specific concerns. They felt the concerns were allayed, but that's not what we have in front of us.
As I think like last time, I certainly, I'm perfectly aligned with, with that sentiment. I guess my, my suspicion is that the, the neighbors got their opinions out on, out on record and since the applicant has taken, taken pains to address, you know, the, the most serious of the concerns.
Yeah.
I would.
It's a drive a couple of days, but they didn't need, they, they were satisfied. They're out here.
Brilliant. Thank you. Gentlemen, any final thoughts?
Looks good to me. Seems like an improvement overall.
Right, then, do you have the stack, Mr. Clerk, if you're gonna be making a motion?
I make a motion to approve a request for a variance pursuant to the town of North End of a zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash four point three A, residence for a district to demolish an existing single-family home and detach garage and construct a new home in the R four zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested two residential lots per lot, one residential building per lot allowed, needing a relief variance of one residential building.
And in referencing the plans, Mr. Clerk?
And I'm gonna reference a plan drawn by Endover Consultants dated November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, uh, which shows the plot plan, which shows, uh, a schematic of the inf- infiltration trench with the proposed houses, with the existing houses, with proposed houses and showing the, uh, proposed driveway.
May make sense to reference the landscape plan, although this is not, this doesn't show the infiltration fence. Yeah, I'm sorry, the infiltration trenches or the fence certainly shows the landscape.
Well, I would think the infiltration thing would be the more important thing, right? I'd like to reference a, uh, architectural plan dated October seventh, two thousand nineteen by Richard Kaderman of twenty-four Water Street, uh, Hollis, Mass., which shows trees and bushes and.
Just the landscape plan.
Okay. I'd like to also reference a building, which is gonna be the new building, I presume, at, uh, drawn by Colonial Drafting of my P.O. Box five thousand sixty-six of Endover, Mass., dated October sixteen, two thousand nineteen. And it shows the architectural, and it shows the, uh, what the hell do you call them? The site plants, the elevation plans of said house to be built.
All right, and since the applicant has incorporated the conditions that we would have discussed into the plan, I think there's no need to list those separately. So their motion is made, is there a second?
A second.
But give, give the second to Michael. Motion made and seconded. Uh, and voting is gonna be Alan, Paul, Alexandria, Michael and Steve, correct? Right?
Yeah.
All right, so motion made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Kuscha.
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yeah.
Mr. Bliss?
Aye.
And Mrs. Paul.
Uh, and I am an aye as well. So five to zero, the variance is approved. I just, I just need, thank you. I just need, I just need to collect these backs, I need to write the decision. The landscape plan, actually, only.
You're not sweating. I ordered you to sweat.
All right, the next item on the agenda is ninety-five Green Street. If you would approach, please. Hi. Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board. You're here on ninety-five Green Street?
Yes.
You can feel free to have a seat. Are you the applicant?
Yes.
You're, all right. Feel free to sit down, make yourself at home.
Okay.
Um, just your name and address for the record.
Uh, Susan Mareski, ninety-five Green Street, North Endover.
Thank you very much. Why don't you tell us what, uh, summer is? Oh, thank you, thank, thank you, Ms. McIntyre. That's why they pay you the big bucks.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
You need to read it and open the application cards.
Notice, notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall at one twenty Main Street, North Endover, Mass. on Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand nineteen, then seven thirty P.M. to all parties interested in the petition of Anthony Marishi.
Maraski.
Marashi for property at ninety-five Green Street, map thirty-two, lot twenty-two, North Endover, Mass. In the R four zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Endover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point three setbacks. Table two, summary of dimensional requirements for one rear setback in the R four zoning district in order to construct an addition. The rear setback proposed is sixteen feet. The required rear setback per table two is thirty feet. The relief variance needed is fourteen feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department, located at one twenty Main Street, North Endover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from the hours of eight A.M. to four P.M. Tuesday from the hours of eight A.M. to five thirty P.M. And Friday from the hours of eight A.M. to eleven thirty A.M. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Cock Jr., Esquire, Chairman.
Thank you again for that emotional reading, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Mareski, why don't you tell us a little bit about your application?
Well, we have, we've lived in the home since nineteen eighty-one and, uh, when we purchased it, it has a, uh, attached breezeway to the garage and a heated porch. And, uh, the, those two structures have not really been, uh, in great condition and we've repaired them multiple times trying to fix leaks in the roofs and so forth. And, uh, I don't think they were part of the original construction of the house, so they're not as solidly built. And, uh, so the square footage is, uh, it just allows for us really, uh, to walk through the breezeway, through the porch area and into the kitchen. And that area is not of much use as it is. And my husband and I would like to, uh, take down, raise those two areas and construct a new room that would allow us to have, uh, an entrance from the garage right into the house, uh, which we don't have right now. And, uh, also have a, uh, a livable room area off the kitchen, which we don't have. And then also a bathroom and laundry area that, uh, would be useful for us. Uh, my husband has an illness where I think we will need some assistance. And so there, we would like to do that.
So you keep in the garage?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. Garage is nice, nice garage. Just a rebuilding of the breezeway and the porch. So basically, we'll be enlarging the breezeway out to the backyard approximately six feet or so, six to seven feet, depending on the foundation. And the porch, which is only just under eight feet wide, needs, would match that, so.
The reason why I'm asking is, is there a variance actually really needed? Because you're not, you're not increasing the non-conformity of the home because the garage setback at thirteen and, you know, one. So the, I don't know if, I don't know if a variance is actually needed, yes.
Because, because the garage is already there, right?
Because you're not, so the rules are basically, are if you incre- if you, if you're increasing the non-conformity of the setback, which you're not in the addition because your garages are already setback thirteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
And then your addition is setback, I had to put my glasses on, sorry. Sixteen. So it's, the thirteen is already there and it's in existing condition. So I'm not quite sure if you do need a variance, is my question.
Well, why don't we do this? She's here.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, she's here, she spent the time, she has the time, okay? Why don't we just give it to her and satisfy all people? And now it's nice and legal. All right? Okay. Now, she took the time to come out on this rainy, cold evening.
I, I understand, but you know, you kind of still have to follow the rules a little bit. Just a little.
I think perhaps the, the angle that Ellen may have been taking, I'm not gonna speak for her, is that it's entirely possible that the board could deny the variance. I'm not suggesting that it would, but in a theoretical, in a theoretical world, if the board denied it, then where would she be? So does she really need one? Who knows? Particularly in the case of whether the board, uh, if the board denies it, we do have a denial from the building inspector, so somebody thinks we need a variance. And I am, I'm aligned with both of you that the applicant is here, we have the paperwork in front of us. Unless the applicant objects, then I, I would imagine that we would proceed. But I, I thank Ms. McIntyre for, for making the point and Mr. Kuscha for amplifying. With that, are there any questions? Any additional questions from the board? So I'll just, I'll just make the point out loud, you made it in, you made it in your memo, but it sounds like you are going to be raising about two hundred twenty square feet and rebuilding that two twenty and then adding about three hundred and fifty square feet. So we're looking at it, from ground up, the addition is gonna be about five hundred seventy square feet. Again, which is only an increase in square footage by about three hundred fifty. Any questions from the board? Is there anybody in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing and hearing none?
Can I make a motion to close the public forum?
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, Alexandria may have jumped again. Uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? No. Public comment is closed. The board shall deliberate on the matter while Mr. Clerk assembles the materials for a motion.
Uh, my only comments are is that I understand why the building inspector probably requested a variance because a garage is a non-living area, so I would think that'd be the reason, but it's still a structure.
It's still a structure.
And I don't think it's, it was required in for you to have to come here and do that. I apologize, but you're here again. Yep. In my opinion, you didn't need them.
Anything else from the board? Seeing and hearing none. I think the floor is yours.
Notice, notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall at one twenty Main Street, North Endover.
No, 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 we're looking for a dissent.
Motion.
I make a motion to grant the variance pursuant to Town and North Endover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point three setbacks. Table two, summary of dimensional requirements for one rear setback in the R four zoning district in order to construct an addition. The rear setback proposed is sixteen feet. The required rear setback per table two is thirty feet. The relief needed is fourteen feet. And I'd like to make mention of a, uh, floor plan and an exterior elevation plan dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, written by, or drawn by a Paul Davidson Associates of Rogers Street and Lowell, and a plot plan from Endover Consultants dated eleven six nineteen, showing a plot plan of where the existing stretches are gonna be.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any conditions from the board? Seeing and hearing none, the motion is made, is there a second?
A second.
Alexandria seconds. Motion made and seconded, Mr. Kuscha.
Aye.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes. Yeah.
Ms. Jacobs, and?
Yes.
Mr. Killay, I am a yes as well, so the variance is granted unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, four sixty-one Summer Street. Come on up.
Can you tell I wanna get home? My back is killing me.
Mr. Kuscha, if you would.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall at one twenty Main Street, North Endover, Mass. On Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty P.M. To all parties interested in the petition of Jennifer Billado for property at four sixty-one Summer Street, map one oh seven point A, lot eighty-five, North Endover, Mass. in the R two zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Endover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point three yards setbacks. And table two, summary of dimensional requirements for one left side setback in the R two zoning district in order to construct an addition. Side setback proposed is twenty-three and two, twenty-three feet two inches. Required side setback per table two is thirty feet. The relief variance needed is six feet, ten inches. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Dis- Zoning Department, located at one twenty Main Street, North Endover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesday and Thursdays from the hours of eight A.M. to four P.M. Tuesday from the hours of eight A.M. to five thirty P.M. And Friday from the hours of eight A.M. to eleven thirty A.M. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Cock Jr., Esquire, Chairman.
I'd name an address for the record, please.
My name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group, uh, twenty-five Clover Circle, Reading, Massachusetts. And I'm, I'm here with the property owners tonight, Jen and Rusty seated behind me. They lived at this property for ten years. They have three small children. The existing house is a little under two thousand square feet. There's a wetland to the rear of the property. That's basically the hardship for this project. There's, there's very little room that you could move to the rear. There's a pool and a wetland in the, in the rear yard. There's an existing septic system in the front yard. If you look at the plot plan, the garage on the right-hand side is basically right at the side yard setback. It's, it's a little over thirty feet. We looked at some options to try to come up with a, a conforming addition so we wouldn't have to come before the ZBA. But as you'll note, the existing house is already a two-story structure, so there's no ability to go vertical in this case. So it left us with the option of, uh, seeking an expansion on the westerly side of, of their home. This expansion is being done presently, their dining room, they can't even fit a dining room table within the dining room. Uh, so they're proposing a fifteen by twenty-three foot, one-story addition. That's three hundred and forty-five square feet added on. And at the closest point to the side lot line, they'll be twenty-three point two feet away. And as you can also see the shape of the lot, it converges as you move back on the property and the location of the existing house with the converging lot lines and the wetlands and back, I think the board will see there, there's hardships involved and it leaves them, this is really the only option if they wanna stay in this home with their, the size of their family and the need for room, um, for an addition. I'll turn it back to the board for any questions.
So on your elevation plans here, you have a little cloud proposed? Is that an option or, um, proposed second-story addition?
They have a proposed second-story addition over, um, I think it's in the mudroom area, abutting the garage. It's not, it's not in front of you for a variance, but they're doing a small addition in that area as well. But that conforms.
The only reason why I'm asking is, you know, um, just. The only reason why I'm asking is, you know, just for footage of the hall, I mean, you're not going to be even near what it, what it is, but you know, we do need to make sure that you're not going over the, whatever percentage, fifty percent, I don't know how many, a hundred percent, whatever it is.
I mean, if we're including the back of the lot, I don't know.
This does need a variance, by the way. Just to clarify.
With authority.
So the existing house is how many square feet?
It's a little under two thousand.
Two thousand? And the addition is?
The addition is three hundred and forty-five square feet.
So for total square footage of twenty-three hundreds plus.
Plus minus.
Which in today's world is still a small house, right?
With three kids.
Yeah.
Anything small with three kids?
Not your bills.
Any questions for the applicant?
Is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing and hearing none, backing us, anything else from the board?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Public comment is closed. Any deliberations from the board?
Well, it definitely helps that it's not much of a variance, it's only about, what, six feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, the, the shape of the lot with the, with the, the front of the addition being, you know, essentially almost conforming is persuasive to me as well, just illustrating the hardship of the shape. Anything else?
There isn't one, I think.
Mr. Kusia.
I make a motion to, to grant the variance pursuant to Town and North Endover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point three yards setbacks, and table two summary of divisional requirements for one left side setback in the R two zoning district in order to construct an addition. Side setback proposed is twenty-three feet and two inches, the required side setback per table two is thirty feet. The relief variance needed is six feet ten inches. And I'd like to make mention of a plan drawn by the Sullivan Engineering Group dated October seventeen, two thousand nineteen, which is the plot plan which shows the current property and the proposed addition. And I also like to make mention of some schematic drawings.
Under seven?
Mm-hmm.
Seven?
Oh, just seven of them?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but who, who drew them up?
He didn't stamp it?
No.
Just, just to architectural drawings, because it's not stamped, so you can't.
The seven pages of architectural drawings of different elevations and floor plans? And floor plans.
Thank you, any conditions needed from the board? Seeing and hearing none, motion made, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Jacobs ready to roll, motion made and seconded. This is coming to you, Michael.
Aye.
Mr. Mr. Kusia?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, so that's unanimously approved, thank you very much.
Wow.
Oh, God, this is gonna be.
Yeah, yeah. Next on the agenda, two ten Holt Road, come on up.
It's got to set up for me here so the audience can see. Larger than the ones that are back.
No, they're about the same, but I hope not.
Yeah, take, take them away. Thank you very much, Merrill. The, the, yeah, Mr. Kusia, the floor is yours first, sorry.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Endover, Mass. on Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty P.M. to all parties interested in the petition of Holt Road LLC for property at two ten Holt Road, map seventy-seven, lot fourteen, North Endover, Mass. in the I two zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Town and North Endover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash four point one four, industrial two district, I residential uses for an indoor shooting range. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Endover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from the hours of eight A.M. to four P.M., Tuesday from the hours of eight A.M. to five thirty P.M., and Friday from the hours of eight A.M. to eleven thirty A.M. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Clark, Jr., Esquire, Chairman.
Now, the floor is yours, won't you?
Mr. Chairman and Board members, my name is Stuart Clark, I'm with Green Seal Environmental, representing MMD Shooting LLC. The applicant here with me tonight is Jen and Jeff Thompson. It's a pretty straightforward application per, special permit, I think they are seeking to get a special permit to have a recreational use in an industrial zone, it's allowed by special permit. The building is an existing structure, there will be a small addition on the back of the structure, twenty-five by seventy-five, to provide egress, because you need two, two means of egress from the second floor of the building. The building has mezzanine now, it's going to be expanded. And this is just a Googler shot of the building so you guys could get a feel for what the building looks like. The proposed work will be on this side. TBI Recycling has their offices in this area and they'll stay, and they have a maintenance garage in there as well. If I flip this over, I'll show you the site plan we prepared for the site, the pink being the addition on the back of the building, this being Holt Road. All, all of work will be in one half of the building. Most of the changes are in the interior besides the addition, the addition meets all setbacks and lot coverage requirements. The parking will be restripped, so we meet the parking requirement. We will be going in front of site plan review next week on the fourteenth for, there again as well. The bylaws allow you to issue a special permit if we can get these five items taken care of or addressed. The site specific is appropriate for the location is number one. We contend that it is a, a perfect spot for it, it's in an industrial park, the nearest house is over a half a mile away, it's near the airport, there's a lot of recycling and industrial buildings there, all, all the activity will be inside this building, there are no gun range or shooting proposed outside of the building. So I think that addresses item A. Item B is kind of dovetailed in there, it will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Again, we contend that this is ideal for this, this type of neighborhood, the building's not going to change, the facade will have just one little vestibule changed on the front, just to provide a weather entrance here, that's the only change to the facade of the building, the building's there, so we contend that there's, there's no change in the neighborhood characteristics. Item C is there's no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians. All parking will be on-site, there'll be no parking on Holt Road or people crossing Holt Road, so I think we have adequate aisle widths and, and parking aisles, nine by eighteen's very standard engineering design, so I believe that there, there will be no serious hazards to, to vehicles or pedestrian movement on the site. Item D says adequate facilities for proper operation and use. Again, all the work, everything's going to be inside the building, there'll be a small retail aisle, there'd be a, a couple of live-fire ranges, a laser range, then some simulator booths along with some training rooms where people can get gun education and their LTC permits. So I would say that this building does meet item D. So the, the last one is determination from the board that this is in harmony with the bylaw, and I will leave that discretion to you guys.
I have some questions, I'll leave this to you.
Fire away.
What are the walls going to be made out of? There's going to be firing range, right?
That's correct.
What are the walls going to be constructed of that, there's going to be no penetration of bullets beyond the walls?
That would be a architectural issue. I'm, I'm sure they have to meet safety requirement, I'm, I'm just a civil.
Are there any state laws that this has to require?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
What, you're sure?
I, I'm a civil site guy, I'm not an architect, I, I did the site plan, the architect is Mr. Kelly, he did the preparation of the plans.
So you don't know if there's any state laws that require walls, a certain thickness or a building material to be a certain?
I'm ignorant of that, I'm sure there are, but I, I don't know for a fact.
What are the hours of operation going to be?
I was going to do that, too.
Yeah, there would be planned normal business hours. Jeff Thompson, forty-four Sutton Hill Road in town, there would be normal operations, regular hours, probably somewhere in that eight, eight to eight, Monday through Friday, Saturdays would be later. There, there is some, some discussion about opening for not the general public, but people that become members to get twenty-four-hour access, so the people that want to shoot late night, especially any of the first responders in town.
Okay, you just said something, people shooting late at night, they're going to be able to hear these gunshots across the street, the French frown?
No, no, the, the noise issues would be, or the noise would be contained within the building.
So the, I work in Middleton, Danvis, and I listen to that range all the time, right on Log Bridge, it's very loud.
In older design, are you talking about a Danvis fishing game?
Yes.
Yeah, it's an older building.
No, 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 it's up, it's in Middleton, it's on Log Bridge Road.
I grew up in Middleton, it's outdoor.
It is an outdoor, it's really loud.
It is.
And they're late, I mean, they do it till nine o'clock at night, and sometimes later I hear them.
Yeah, we, obviously, we would have insulated, insulated panels throughout the building to try to limit the, any noise issues, I mean, that would obviously be a nuisance condition that the Board of Health would be involved in.
And, and I offer to the board that inside gun ranges usually have smaller caliber weapons than an outdoor range, you're not going to have anybody shoot a fifty caliber out there or shotguns.
Will, will people be bringing their own weapons?
Yes.
Yes, there would be people that could bring their own weapons, we would have some guns available on-site for rental and use.
Do you shoot a range before? I, I have, but the, the.
I have not.
The point was made.
Really? Bring your own and then you can also rent them, so you can get some big, huge power work going through your.
Are you going to be selling guns?
The point was made about what kind of guns to be there.
Yes, there will be a retail area for.
You're going to be selling guns, too?
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to be the main focus of the business, but, you know, if you've got the ability for people to come in and, and try a gun to, in order before they spend the money to buy it, it, it just makes sense.
So I don't think that's allowed, and allow use of a retail space is not allowed? And that property?
There is a, in the I two, I believe it's ten percent, it's no more than ten percent.
Ten percent of what?
Ten percent of the.
Of the eighty thousand square feet, is that, is that allowed? I'll have to look at it again, because I didn't see that.
Yeah, it's in the I two zoning that retail, a limited retail is allowed.
Of the ten percent of the gross area of the floor plan, is that what you're saying?
I believe it is. It's either ten or fifteen percent.
For the board, this is the area, twelve hundred seventy-five square feet, shown in the warrant.
How big's that?
Twelve seventy-five?
How big's the building?
The whole building is, the footprint is fifteen thousand, but this side's going to have two levels, it'll have the first level, you walk up, so there's a mezzanine and a second level where they're going to have the airgun range and the virtual, the virtual simulators up here and some training rooms. So the total footprint is eighteen thousand, excuse me, let me get this board out here. The, the total footprint is seven thousand square feet. So that's where the ten percent comes from, and we're a little under the twelve, uh, twelve, ten percent.
Did you, actually, contact the airport, are they okay with gun ranges next to an airport, is that a violation?
They were notified of this public hearing.
Is it?
Is there any recommendation by the police chief?
The police chief was the first one we spoke with. Before, before we even went to anybody else, we went to the chief first, spoke with Chief Gray, and I don't want to speak for him, but I'll just tell you what he said, he was absolutely in favor of it.
Did he write you a letter to provide to us?
Didn't ask him for one, I guess I could have.
But the police chief knew about this hearing?
No.
Well, why wouldn't the police chief know about the hearing?
Because they don't come here.
Well, he said he went to the police chief, right?
Yeah, well, many months ago, met with, met with the chief at, at the building, walked him around inside the building, explained to him exactly what we were looking to do. He was thrilled, he'd, he'd love to have the officers in town being able to.
You don't have a letter from him?
Didn't ask him one.
Expressing his.
Yep, you have my word, that's what he was.
Are there any other operational permits or licenses that you have to have for a shooting range? That's where you might find regulations or codes for how it's built so that it's not penetrating or.
Yeah, I mean, there are.
Sound controls or those sort of things.
Yeah, I mean, there are certain, you know, concrete, if you were going to have concrete walls, they would have to be, you know, concrete, regular cement blocks are allowed, but you'd need to have them filled. If you went AR five hundred steel plate, you've got the rubber, rubber blocks that they put on the walls, gigacrete can be added to concrete walls that is bullet resistant.
But are there other state or local business permits or permits for a shooting range? I know. Are you going to be going in front of? Other permitting boards for this facility?
I don't believe anything else in town that we would need to go in front of.
Besides, besides.
Besides planting, that was already mentioned.
What will be done in terms of air filtration?
There would be a engineer brought on-site, I mean, these are, they're already available systems that somebody that does this for a living would design.
I understand, it's just that indoor shooting ranges have a history of environmental violations and a lot of employees getting quite sick from them, so I just wanted to throw that out there that that's something that should be given some, some rigor.
It may, but that usually occurs at the older facilities, I was a member down at Mystic Valley Gun Club down in Malden for twenty-something years, God knows when that facility was built. Yeah, if there were too many people shooting in there, it, it got smoky, but it was an old facility, had, had no changes done to it in ten, fifteen years. They finally updated some, some of the target systems, but didn't do anything with the air filtration system.
How much lead waste do you think you'll be producing on a yearly basis?
Lead waste would be contained within the bullet trap area, whether we go with the steel, the steel bullet traps which take the kinetic energy out by, basically, it's like a snail, the bullets deflect, rotate around, and just end up in a, in a pail.
Right.
Or, or we go with the, the rubber bullet trap that after a certain amount of time you pull the rubber off with all the lead that's contained in, and then separate out the rubber material from the lead and put the rubber back.
That typically is extracted from a gun range.
It's going to all depend on how, how much it's being used, and not everybody, you know, we're also, it's not just going to be handguns, we're also looking at the virtual trainers for people that go through and pass a very simple, I don't want to say, well, a fairly easy license to carry process. Now, once you have a license to carry, that means you can go out and buy a gun and you are allowed to carry that. Does it necessarily mean it's the safest person out there to be carrying a gun? No. And that's the reason, one of the reasons why we, we are interested in doing this, that people that have guns should have to be more trained than, than the simple. people that have guns should have to be more trained than, than the simple course that you have to take to get the license. Somebody that carries a gun, I can guarantee that if any of the members have a license to carry or have gone through that course, you've never had to draw your gun from a holster and to try to shoot. And that type of training should be done, and it should be available to people more often. I mean, in our opinion, people that carry guns should have a lot more training than what they currently are required to have. So virtual trainers as well as, we're looking to set up an air area where you can, a lot of the gun manufacturers nowadays, the exact same gun that you buy that will shoot a bullet, they make a variant that will shoot air. Part of the reasons why is safety, that you can learn to draw your gun and shoot a pellet without injuring anybody, and you can practice, and it's a lot less expensive than shooting bullets, it's a lot less expensive, but the gun feels, weighs, operates in the exact same manner.
Just from a different direction, the tenant that uses, I drove up and I looked at your facility, and so, I mean, it looks like, I mean, I saw, I'll call it the big semis backed in to, so does the tenant that will continue to be there, are they just downsizing to half of the building and you're going to redeploy the other half? Or can you just educate me a little bit on the building, what I saw?
Yeah, on the, on the current building, we used to have what was more of a commercial trucking company as well, we had roll-off containers, railload cans that would have been behind businesses. We've sold that business off in 2017, so we're underutilizing the building that's there, and this just happens to be something that myself and my wife, who both have license to carry, were always interested in, in doing, and the opportunity presented itself, so that's why we're here.
So those semis there, were backed in there?
The, there are trailers at the east end of the property, then there is the processing facility where, unfortunately, we had the fire in August, and then this building is all the way to the west, almost at the end of Holt Road where it turns up to either Clark to the left or the right. The building was always built to be separated out, and we would just be taking half of the building, the eastern half, and leave the western half for really just our maintenance and offices for the trucking pod.
So does the, does the percentage of space that you're allowed for retail apply to the specific business or the entire building?
Well, we would be at, on this side with the addition, I think we're around 17,000 square feet, just on that. The existing footprint, the existing building is 15,000 square feet, we're looking to take half and then double it because we're doing a second, second level.
So this, this operation of this business itself is 17,000 square feet?
Yes, yes.
And you're at 1,200 square feet for the, so it's-
Yep.
Less than 10 percent, if, if that's what their percentage is. Does the fire department need to review this? I mean, I'm sure they will for a building permit, but-
Yeah, that would be-
Is there anything operational or any other fire hazards related to this sort of use?
I don't think necessarily to the use, maybe, you know, you could say the fire department, whatever is concerned on the, on the retail side for storage of any bullets, that would be ammunition that would be for sale onsite, that I can only, that's the only one that I would guess that they would have an issue with.
I guess, who reviews the overall safety of the site that it's set up and designed properly, what?
Who are you accountable to in designing this facility? This thing? How to be a state entity?
Building code, state building code?
I'm sure there is a state building code, I'm not fluent in the, in the building codes, but I'm sure that there is a state, I mean, there are federal guidelines that I've seen recommendations for designing and building shooting ranges, I mean, the federal government has them, they build them, not all the time, but they do build them, federal agency-
I wouldn't guess the technical, uh, addresses construction of it, but I'm thinking the op, the operation of it as well, and how the logistics of it work inside and any procedures that you need to follow operationally, you know, I build a lot of buildings myself, and a lot of them have other standards that they have to meet, so I was just wondering what is required for this, this use.
Yeah, I don't know of any specific federal rules when it comes to-
Anything.
Any of them that, that would deal with specific of the, you know, your, your physical operation of the facility, you know, I can-
Like if you want a legal license, you have to go to the, you know, there's a, there's a state board for that, and you have to set it up in certain requirements, which is different than the building codes, right? I'm just, I have no idea about this use, so I'm curious.
It's more, I think, most of what you're talking, or in this particular case, it's building codes that are really key.
I mean, I, I think for, for me, my, my hesitation with this is, is that we don't really have any sense of, like, who, who you're accountable to in all of this, and that makes us a little nervous, or at least makes me a little nervous.
I'm going to just assume, because it's Massachusetts, that there's some kind of regulation on the sense of, that there's something in the sense of you can't just open up a warehouse, you know, throw a frickin' target up and say, hey, I have an indoor shooting range. I'm going to make the assumption that people, as politicians as stupid as they are, have some kind of regulation going on in that.
But if they don't know, how are we supposed to know?
Because they're also not the ones designing it.
But they're, it's there here in front of us, so they should be able to present to us some codes, guidelines that they have to abide by. I mean, it's not up to us, the burden is in the applicant, not up to us as a board.
I agree.
And I would never make the assumption that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has something in place to appease us.
Well, we-
I thought that we heavily supported.
We've brought, well, not to interrupt, but we've been, my wife's already been approved for her federal firearms license, so the, the alcohol, tobacco, firearm, and explosives have been to the site and have approved that site for her FFL license.
I think we just need to be a little more educated in the process, you know, and then we're looking for you for guidance of how, of like, you know, the, obviously, the material and some of these questions that, and the permitting process and who you are accountable is more of our questions than, you know, not to doubt you, that we're not getting, that I'm not getting answers for, and I'm thinking some of the other board members as well.
My question is this, as Alex said, and I totally agree with you, that somewhere in the regulations of the Commonwealth of Mass, there has to be something in, okay, in writing. I would just like to see, and like she said, you, the burden is upon you, that you come to us and you say, Article 4, Section 2, Paragraph 3 says, we need a two-foot wall, cinder block or steel, and then you say, and here's our plan that conforms to what the, the state wants, okay? Because we don't know what the state wants, okay? So you should show us what the state is looking for, and that you're going to comply with what the state is looking for.
If this board would be so kind, could you continue the meeting and we could get you that information?
If, if there are any other questions, we'd be more than getting the answers.
You know, for me, I'm curious about the lockup of it when you're not there, do you have to have regulations on, like, do you have to put it in a cement room? You, you know what I mean, is the, I don't know if it's that steep, but those regulations of how do you-
Like the guns for sale?
Yes, for sale.
What happens if somebody breaks in there, right?
Well, well-
Whoa, 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 there's certain requirements.
They all have to be locked.
There's strict, strict requirements on a, 10 percent even being a dealership, on locking up and storing of firearms. So it's not like a regular storefront where you just end up having one little dinky thing and one little bolt, and you call it a day, and someone throws a brick through the glass window and steals all the guns. That one, I can tell you right off the bat, is absolutely not a problem.
But Kmart at Walmart, Kmart, do you remember, you can go in and Kmart-
You're talking Kmart, you're not talking about somebody whose license is on the line.
Am I just showing my age too?
Only because I do remember years ago, especially up in Plasda, New Hampshire, there were a number of gun dealers that were in regular type strip malls.
You have to have the metal lockdown.
And the cars drove right through the window, stolen car, drove them right through the doors or right through the window, ran in and grabbed as many guns as possible. We would eliminate any windows in the facility, there would be no windows in there, that's part of the reasons why we added a vestibule, we would have major bollards put on the corners of the vestibule, so that there is no way anybody could drive a car in and do a smash and grab.
My one little concern is that, for members, the 24-hour access, that I'm not sure how-
That's not a definite yet, I can tell you right now, in my conversation with Chief Gray, that is where we were staying, with them having access.
Well, and I was just going to say, I do like and appreciate the fact of the guys who are working the day shift, and so they're up at night and midnight, so something on restricting it to law enforcement only, if, and I don't even know if we, that's something we have control over, that's just my, I obviously don't have a problem with a cop walking into, you know, a shooting range at one o'clock in the morning. I am uneasy with a regular civilian walking in.
Myself, I was a member of Mystic Valley Gun Club for over 20 years, it was 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It went from key fobs to fingerprints, I mean, it changed as the technology changed to get in and out, full security system inside, there were cameras, in, in all the years that I was a member, never heard of a single problem.
Do you have anything like that in place here? I mean, just-
Well, of course, we'd be looking to put in security cameras that would-
Can you outline your security plan for us as well, just for me, for my peace of mind, and like, you know, if someone's coming in there and-
Well, if we were to do the, the 24-hour a day, you would, you would have to have some type of access, whether it's biometric, key cards, fobs.
You wouldn't have an employee onsite?
Not 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
That would be not resolved in any way.
And it's, and it's members, it's not to the general public, and, and that's not exactly what we were talking about, but it happened to come up, because I was a member at Mystic, and that's what we had.
If you're afraid you miss anything that one of the board members wants, it's recorded, just so you can find it online.
Okay, thank you.
So, your members, and I'm not a, this is a, you're in a, we're in an area where I'm not well-educated, but what, what's going through my mind is, can someone driving a 495 or 93 just come over and shoot, or in advance to become a member? Is there some process, you know, I heard reference to, you know, you, you have a permit, I mean, when you carry, does everybody who has a gun, I mean, do they then need to, I'm going to say, register in order to use your facility, or is it impromptu? How does that work?
Well, myself and my wife went down to Cape Gunworks just a couple of weekends ago to see that facility, and we've never been there before, when you go in, you have to present that, you know, your, your ID, and even though we both have license to carry, they still require you to sit with one of their members, one of their staff, and go through and demonstrate that you actually know how to operate safely before they allow you to go to the range.
So let me just ask the same question in another way, if someone showed up, this is the first time that they appeared at your site and they wanted to shoot, you know, on one hand, I mean, what if they were a criminal, or who know, I mean, how do you know, is there a qualification period that that person has to go through that eliminates someone who may want, maybe stolen guns, maybe, who knows what the motivations are? I'm just trying to understand the security from how people, what is the security if someone wants to use your facility?
Well, somebody that did not have a license to carry, yes, could still go, you would still have to sit and go through, basically, a similar training type that even though I had a license to carry, I still had to go through it, and demonstrate that, or have demonstrated to you the proper handling of firearms and how the range would work. You know, you can't walk around with a loaded gun, you know, they, even Cape Gunworks had little rubber stoppers that when there were no rounds in the chamber, that would be showing, so that if you presented a gun that you were renting back to them, they know that there is no round in the chamber.
So you think you're in a shooting range without a license to carry, so any, a bachelor party comes in and wants to shoot guns?
No.
Not, not if they're drinking.
I mean, but if you don't have staff there, if you open 24/7 and you don't have staff, how do you-
They don't, they don't have access.
So only members would be allowed to come in.
Well, let me, and I think I get this, aside from your extra safety measures, it sounds like you guys are somewhat functioning, and aside from the 24-hour, similar to the range up in Manchester, where if you are a regular civilian, you don't have to have a license to carry, you can go in, you essentially rent one of their guns, you buy bullets, you go into the shooting range, you shoot it off, you have a blast, you leave, you give them back their gun, and you walk out the door and you go to work. Or you're somebody who has a license to carry, you bring in your own firearm, you show your license to carry, you go through the safety process, so on and so forth, shoot my own gun, possibly buy bullets, have a great time, rent a gun from yours, walk out the door. Or I'm also becoming a member, which would grant me a key fob, which means I can come there when it's closed, I don't have access to buying bullets, to renting guns, but I can shoot my own, and then walk out the door and leave.
Yes.
You've done this before.
No, not at all.
Intuitive, just intuitive.
Essentially, that's how you guys are functioning.
Yes.
Or you can be with another member to your-
Or, okay, or you can be with another member.
You could be with another member as well, which is what you find mostly. No, because we wouldn't have had time to review them, so only if you were a member.
So essentially-
Because you can only bring one other person with you.
Members only.
Members only.
No members and a guest are allowed after hours.
Right.
So if you're found to, if I'm a member and I bring somebody who's not a member at 2:00 AM, and you guys see your security cameras the next day, you're pulling my membership.
There will be-
Hit the button on the fob, won't work anymore.
And there will be designated public versus member areas, so, because not everyone, you know, that wants to be with the public.
And I'm sorry, the reason for the 24-hour member access is police, fire?
It's, it's, there are a lot of people that, you know, not everybody works nine to five, there are a lot of people that do work second shifts and third shifts that might not necessarily-
But you're going to be open seven days a week.
Would look to be open seven days a week.
Which you could, at normal operating hours, I mean, not, I don't think everyone works seven days a week, 24 hours, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but also, not everybody works Monday through Friday, I mean, there are people that, that work security, that can work on weekends, that work odd hours.
I will say this, my personal standpoint on the 24-hour. A letter from the chief regarding officers having the ability to practice and train who are day, you know, night shift, whatever.
Absolutely, molested chief for such a letter.
That makes me, like I say, for law enforcement, I, I think you're going to run into a little bit of a, a speed bump with other board members doing a 24-hour access for members.
If it's, if it's one of those things that, if it was a stipulation for opening up, that we could revit, we could come back to that at a future date, absolutely, we could, we could adjust and just do normal, normal business hours and have 24-hour for first responders only, and then hopefully be able to come back at some point to discuss that.
I'm not a fan of 24.
Even if it's only for-
Absolutely not. You can't discriminate like that, you just can't, I don't think you should be able to discriminate against-
I think there's a big-
The profession, so I don't.
No, see, I think there's a big difference.
What if they were a member? So I guess that's my only question, is that I don't understand where-
Even for law enforcement?
For law enforcement?
Correct, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a fan of guns, I have to tell you so, and I'm absolutely not a fan of 24/7, so, yes.
I wonder if you could have subcategory of memberships.
Ah!
I'm getting arraigned, sorry.
Let me say this, I have a son-in-law who's a corrections officer, and he's licensed to carry, okay? And the shifts go from, I think he goes to work at seven o'clock in the morning and gets out at 3:30. So let's say the second shift comes in at four o'clock, and they work till 12, all right? And let's say the guy who works to 12, you know, he's a little hyped up from working everything else, he wants to go shooting, right? So let's say he works in Nashua, the Nashua Street Jail, like my son-in-law, and he lives in North Andover, so he gets there about one o'clock in the morning, so he works second shift, okay, he's a law enforcement guy, and he wants to let off some steam, for lack of other words, at one, two o'clock in the morning? I'd just say, no. Like he said, not everybody works nine to five.
Alan, sometimes I do agree with you.
Well, they could come before the shift starts.
Oh, come on.
Absolutely, they could have come on Saturday, I mean, he's not working seven days a week.
I could go to gym at one, five now.
He works every other day.
They could be in a conference today.
They have 24-hour gyms, for goodness sakes.
They do.
Yeah, but you're saying not everybody, he's right, not everybody works nine to five.
I agree with- I agree with you and I.
And I just showed you, my, my son-in-law, who's a corrections officer, he works first shift, but how about this, sometimes he gets drafted there to work the second shift, and he doesn't get out of work till 12:00, 1:00.
It's just my opinion that I don't think an unmanned 20, an unmanned shooting range, open 24/7. I know you don't have to be there, and there's a possibility of a second part, you have a key, you can swipe someone else in. I mean, it's guns.
And I guess I sit here and say, what's the difference between a 24-hour, and again, I don't like the open to the public 24-hour.
No, 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 that's out. The member, the member. He would have to be a member.
Well, that's why I say maybe you have, you know, law enforcement members. What's the difference between them going to a shooting range inside with their own gun and their own bullets, versus being out in a frickin', I don't know, Harold Parker, shooting?
Shooting at Dinty Moore's Stu cans?
I mean, I have to say, like, I, I, I'm with Ellen here in the sense that I don't, I don't quite know how I feel about 24-hour access for members, but I don't distinguish between members and law enforcement. I, I just don't, because they're people too.
But see, one of my, one of my differences being is that, and those who don't have a license to carry, won't understand this, a five-year-old can get a license to carry based off of the requirements. So I'm not comfortable with somebody who has a license to carry and has a firearm, walking out of unknown 24-hour gun range at 2:00 in the morning, with the possibility of, and granted, I get it, we're in North Andover, but we're not crime-free. I'm not comfortable with somebody walking out, and the possibility of who else is around to some, like, for example, someone like me.
And, and.
Versus a law enforcement officer, or somebody who's more, you know, versed in it, is going to be more okay if somebody were to come and, like, attack them at 2:00 AM, if you want to go to that extreme of it.
Well, but, but, I mean, the flip side is, I, I agree with the first half of it, but in the second half, all the things that I would be worried about a civilian doing are also things that corrections off, that, that, that law enforcement officers are capable of doing. I, I, and I don't, and that is no disrespect to our wonderful law enforcement officers in this town. It is just, humans are humans, and this is, this is about what humans do, not about what specific kinds of people do.
You're more likely to have an idiot who got a license to carry, never shot a gun other than at a shooting range, blowing off their foot, than a five-year police officer. And if.
If I can't trust a cop at 2:00 in the morning with his own gun in a shooting range, I don't know who I can trust.
Well, thank you. Don't trust me with a gun at 2:00 AM.
I, I don't disagree with that statement. It's just, I'd like to take it to a different conclusion.
If you haven't trusted that police officer to be doing the right thing with his weapon, then we have a problem. We've got a very big problem.
I agree.
And that, and the gun, the gun range is not the source of that problem. A, a membership to shoot a weapon at 2:00 in the morning is not the problem. The problem is with that particular officer.
So that's where my standing is.
Enforcement, the more training, the better.
I think my, my hesitation about the idea of, of someone coming in at night is less about the time of day, and more about the fact that it is alone. That, not so much that there be an accident, but that people behave differently when they are around people, when they are around people that they see regularly, and it, it's just, I, I, I have more faith in, in a group of people than I have in one person's, in a room, sort of shooting lots of bullets, and what they sort of, what their state of mind will be when they leave.
Again.
That is just my personal feeling and my personal bias.
Just from my own experience.
I would much rather have somebody shoot themselves alone than to shoot 20 other people in the room. So I mean, who do, I mean, I'm not sure where we're going with that.
My concern is the other people who show up at 2:00 in the morning, not just the people who got off a second shift, but it's people who just get out of a bar. If they happen to be members, there's no one there to know whether they've been drinking or out of a bar or whatnot, and they're showing up at that time, shooting.
Yeah, that's, that's a clear violation of their gun license. That's a gun crime. They will, they will lose their license for life and, uh, go to jail.
Well, who, who's there to know?
No, but what I'm saying is, I think the concern on that aspect becomes, because obviously, the whole issue of having a loaded firearm and drinking is an issue of your license to carry, yes. I think the concern becomes is, if you have a cop there who's doing his thing, 2:00 AM, letting off some steam, and then you've got some drunk moron who comes in, and the cop's just kind of like, oh, hey, uh, is it going all right? And next thing you know, the idiot moron is, you know, throwing his gun all over the place and shoots a fight. Which, again, brings me back to, I think we have a higher standard with law enforcement than we do general moronic idiots.
Again, just from my own experience, I was a member of Mystic Valley, again, for many years. It was 24 hours a day, seven days a week the entire time that I was there. And there was many a night on a weekend that I would go 1:00, 2:00 in the morning and shoot. Never had a problem. Never heard of a problem, ever. And that's, that's down in Walden. Not North Andover.
One, one of the advantages that you have over us is that you have 20 years of experience with the gun club. The experience that we have is trying to make decisions for a community based on imperfect information and needing to believe an applicant.
Sure.
So it's, it's really hard for laypeople, perhaps, Ms. Jacobs aside.
I would take a safety course in a heartbeat.
For laypeople to wrap their heads around the safety involved in an ultra-hazardous activity like this, particularly when it's not supervised in any way, other than by security cameras, which work the next morning, not in the moment, the way that a bouncer would at 2:00 in the morning at the front door of the gun club. So I'm not sure how to, how to satisfy that, if that can be satisfied, but I'm just trying to kind of, kind of put a bow on that, so that we don't keep going around in circles. I think that what you've heard from the board is that there is some not insignificant concern for more than one member regarding that element of the operations. Look, there, there are probably 20 other layers to the operations of this particular club, not the least of which is the educational component, that I think I heard you indicating that there were, would be some of. So I guess, I, I would like, if we could, to move from the 24/7 element, which is extraordinarily important. I don't think it's anything we're gonna resolve tonight, and I doubt that we're gonna come up with anything new in the next 10 or 15 minutes, if, if we keep going on that. So if we could kind of make, perhaps move to another portion of the application or a different, different concern or line of questioning for the applicant.
Just, if I can add, this, this kind of move, but first of all, again, I, I, I think that the location and your building and all the mechanics of it, to me, are really, you know, make a lot of, you know, I, I think you have a good, a good facility and a good location of the facility. For someone who doesn't own a gun, okay, the part that I am trying to understand, and this is a reiteration of what you've, that membership, that monitoring of it, the, you know, the, I wanna call, the security, the membership, the mechanics of the people that are using it is, is where my complete focus is. It's not on the plan, the facility and the plans and, and where the shooting's gonna take place. So I, you know, I know that 93, 495, and, and, and drugs, and, and stolen guns, and those are the things that I worry about, and those are the areas that I'd like you to educate me on how that security and that membership and that access, and how someone who shows up, who shouldn't be there, how that's detected, how that's dealt with. Those are the questions that I have.
If somebody shows up with a license to carry and has their own gun, there is no way for us to verify whether that's a stolen gun or not. I mean, it just isn't. Somebody that doesn't have a license to carry, that does show up, that is looking to, to try shooting, maybe they want to see if they do want to take a, an LTC class, and as part of that LTC class, they might want to try different manufacturing of guns, or different caliber sizes of guns. They would be able to shoot. You'd have to have, obviously, an ID that you would have to present, and there would be a ranger officer that would be responsible for making sure that that person operates safely. I mean, obviously, we would have cameras all around, that there, people that are on-site that would be watching to make sure.
So just if I can interject a question there.
Yes.
So I'm now envisioning your, your operational, your employees, then, is the standards that you utilize at that facility that your employees withhold? Are those created by you, or are those created by the association of gun ranges? I mean, so how is this regulated, is my question?
Well, I mean, guns are regulated, alcohol, tobacco, firearms, and explosives. There's a natural, National Shooting Foundation, Federation, that I'm sure has some guidelines. But, you know, operationally, within the range, you know, we could have more strict rules than, Mystic Valley pretty much had no rules. You were a member 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They had cameras, as long as you didn't do anything that caused any damage to the facility, or caused any issues with any shooters, you were allowed to, to go and shoot any, anytime you wanted. But that's, that's, that's a member. Somebody that is just from the public, obviously, the range would always have a ranger officer, and we're not talking about massive number of, of ranges available for people to be shooting. It's limited.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna, the last thing I'm gonna say is just, I'm gonna ask you to just, I'm gonna put on my shoes for a minute to say that, how does someone like myself, if, if we voted and I vote yes, how do I explain to my neighbor how this all is going to affect our community here? So those are the kind, that's why I'm asking those questions, because of the responsibility associated with the decisions that we make, and being able to explain to someone, oh yeah, well, this is how this is covered, and this is how this is covered, and this, this is how this is covered, et cetera.
Well, it, I think it's, well, what I've said in, in Jacobs has, has kind of reiterated my statement that, that you just pass a simple written exam after sitting in a license-to-carry class, and you get the okay to go buy guns, after you've gone through a background check.
Background check, you get.
But, it's a fairly, it's, it's not overly complicated.
I literally think it's a tough question. And one of the questions is center fire and rim fire, or something like that, or revolver and handgun.
But you still have to go to the police chief, you get your background check.
Right, but that.
So you're not a criminal, yeah, you know?
You have to not be a criminal.
Well, I just, I just want you guys to have some comfort level. People with LTCs, you know, they've been checked. They're not just, they're not going up to a slot machine and getting a card.
And I guess one of my things, which I appreciate of what you guys are looking to do, is the safety, because licensed, there are plenty of people who have a license to carry and still are butter fingers with a gun, and that is the scariest thing in the world.
And that's where we need to.
And there are significant, I mean, there are a lot of people that have license to carries that you, or have a license, that you may not necessarily know, but what you do, what you would like, is the people that do have a license to carry are in fact able to go shoot and get proper training, so that if they ever really did need it, they could do so effectively and safely. Now, that's.
So here's the thing, so I've been on the board for quite a while, and for all my times here, I've never seen an application for a shooting range. So I would like to be educated. I mean, obviously, you, you're in the business, and you know a lot about it, and you must have something, you must have something in place, your security plan in place, for, you have, you don't have that in place for your business?
Well, we haven't gotten the permit yet, so that means we need the permit for the variance to change the building before I'm gonna build out and buy all the systems and HVAC systems.
You have a plan. It's a plan.
But.
But I'm not building on my process, yeah.
An intention of what you wanted, of, of your security, of what happens if I, if someone does this. I mean, you must have, obviously, again, you've seen it, you've lived it, you've done it. You must know what needs to be done.
We could use some operating procedures.
Yeah, absolutely, something like that. And something of the fact is, I can't have a school next to me. I mean, there must be some of those regulations that, there's, there's gonna be a fairly large complex next to you, retail, that they're building now. I mean, it's, it's a distance away.
There's no retail in, in the I-2 district.
Down the street, Nabak's Farm. Fajitas Farm, sorry. It's across the street.
Quite some distance away.
Yeah, it is, but still, I mean, it's kind of in the area, and people see that, and it's like, you must have to have a distance of, it can't be five miles, or a school, you must have, you must have regulations.
Well, you know, you know, the, the permitting that we had to go through for the recycling facility, sensitive receptors was a part of that, and we didn't have any issue with any sensitive receptors.
So I, I did happen to be on those applications of, of all that.
I do remember.
Yes. That was thrown to me, that guy, well, here, here's the strip club, have at it. So, again, you know, just like, just as, as the board members say, just educate us on what you need to do, is what I'm asking for, because I, I've never seen this.
Yeah, we'll come back with a little plan.
You know, unfortunately, the availability of shooting ranges, you know, are more, they're more like the one that I belong to, Mystic Valley. You know, God knows, built somewhere in like 1920. I mean, they're old.
In fact, that's born in Walden, so.
Well, you know it is on Commercial Street, right, right across the street from Anthony's.
Walden Park's not there anymore.
No, no, right across from Commercial Street. Mystic Valley Gun Club is right across from Anthony's Restaurant. You probably never even knew that it was there. It's literally right across the parking lot. Single-story, brick building, nondescript, just had MVGC on it, that's it.
But unfortunately, we're gonna know this is here, so, I mean.
We're right down the street from the Police Department, Holt Road. It's a, a, pretty much a dead-end road, no sidewalks, it's not a, a, a walking road. But, well, absolutely, if you, the board allows us, give us as many questions as you have, and we'll get answers, and we'll come back with, with answers.
I think what we would like is for you to be educating us, and so, like, lead, lead us a little bit in terms of what the process of, frankly, of opening a, of a gun range is like, because we just, we don't know.
But, I had to prepare when I don't know what the questions are. So, yeah, as many questions as.
Well, we've, we've hit you with a lot of them.
Yep, and we'll come back with answers. Absolutely.
I'd probably say, go back and watch the recording once it's been uploaded, and it'll give you a good idea of everything everybody on the board wants to make everybody happy.
Absolutely. But, yep, Chief Gray, I'll, I'll definitely go see him.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would appreciate.
Absolutely.
I would appreciate that, because I, I think there is a value, and, you know, I.
And again, I'll just, I'll repeat myself. We, Chief Gray was the first one we went and spoke to, before we even put anything down on paper, the first one, because if, we knew, if the chief was against it, it.
You're all done.
It was all, yeah. So he was the first one we saw, he was absolutely in favor of it. If that's just mine, I'll ask him.
What's your plan for our meeting? Next Tuesday.
The 17th.
Let's see, VIP space.
I'm sorry?
What's the VIP space?
That's for the member, like the.
Members only.
Members only.
It's just the lounge room is pretty sexy, or is it?
Is there a bar in there for him, or what?
No, no.
Just, what, what's in there?
Just, they don't have to interact with the public.
You just have a couch, there'd be a TV, if you wanted to sit and read the paper or whatever. Did you get your own little place? You want a cup of coffee?
Throw some darts.
I wanna go to people who I don't like people, so, I get it.
And, just, why is there range A and B? Are there differences between the two ranges?
Well, you would have, you could section off, if you only had four or five people shooting, you wouldn't space them out amongst the two. You would, lights off on one side, everybody on one side.
How many, yeah, corrals?
Twelve.
Twelve. Is that what they're called? Did I use the right terminology? Is it a corral?
Shooting, yeah, yeah, shooting stalls.
Sorry.
So one side enough for one type of non-person, another is just, just a convenience?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't look to, we wouldn't look to, I mean, we're, we're not gonna be constructing it such that you'd be able to, like Stu said, come in with a 50B MG rifle and be shooting at it. That's, it's just not, it's, this is more handgun.
These, these shooting lanes are isolated from the retail area where people stand. There's a, you know, door with, you know, bulletproof glass on it. It's monitored, you go in there only two at a time. Fur lane, you always have to have eye protection on, ear protection on at all times. Your gun has to be in a safe position, it can't be loaded, until you get to the platform, and you, then you load up your target, you load up your gun there. So it, it's very, we'll, we'll get you the, we'll get you the operating procedures, so you guys.
Regimented.
Some, a better field for what goes on.
Means I have to be here next month.
And the, the Lula, I, I've run into a lot of problems trying to get Lulas in versus elevators, if you, especially where you're, you know, relatively a new building, because you're building the second floor. So would you be able to do an elevator if you need to? I just would.
Well, it's in a, it's like.
You'll have to, when you go to get the elevator permit, you'll find out or not.
Yeah.
If, if they deny the Lula, I'm just saying, you, you'll need access to the second floor. So you'd be able to do an elevator if the Lula's denied?
Wasn't it the building, guys, that said we needed a Lula?
Yeah, actually, I think it was Paul that recommended.
Paul told us we needed it.
Yeah, but he, he's not the one who wishes an elevator permit. It's the state.
Oh, it's the state.
And I've, I'm getting an elevator variance right now for a building, so. And I've, I'm getting an elevator variance right now for a building, so.
We're gonna try.
That's a, is there anything else from the board or shall Mr. Clerk make a motion to continue?
Has someone in the audience, do you wanna?
Yeah, I'd like to jump out and say this.
Yeah, play, if there's, yes, is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this? Absolutely, come on up.
I'm the only one in the town that knew about the meeting, so I might as well say something.
If, if you could see the podium, please.
Oh, go ahead. Hi, my name's Tom Kousha, three, four, nine Bear Hill, relative of one of the board members, if you can guess. The, I'm a licensed carrier, I'm fully in favor of this thing going in. I have to drive to Drake it and go to a gun club out there and it's, let me just dispel a couple mo, a couple notions. One, there's big New Hampshire, New Hampshire and Massachusetts have a couple of big differences. One is, in Massachusetts, a person without a carry license cannot just walk in to any gun range and pick up a gun and start shooting. They have to be with somebody else who doesn't necessarily have to have a license, but you can't go in by yourself. There's, there's like a two-person rule if you don't have a license in Massachusetts for su, it's like to stop suicides because you're less likely to do it if your friends with you or whatever. And you have to sign waivers and they do check your, they take all your IDs and whatever. So you're definitely known who you, you're not just like walking in saying, yeah, let me get that Glock and then you go shoot and then you're like, cool, like bye. It's a little more complicated and you have to be with somebody else. And in regards to the twenty-four hours, Andover has a twenty-four hour member-only gun club or it's like members, members only access to the twenty-four hours. So if you want to stay on par with Andover, just saying.
Does Andover really?
Yes. And in regards to the, getting your, your carry permit is such an, it's easy, but it's an ordeal. And to become, like, and then to, to purchase a weapon, they're expensive. To become a member of a club, I pay four hundred dollars for a six-month membership. And that's just to like gain access, not twenty-four hours, but that's, I have unlimited lane, lane time, so it kind of balances out. But when it comes to like dr, when it comes to drinking, I mean, it's, it's one of those things of you say, someone's gonna leave a bar and go to a gun range and do something stupid. I would say, well, why don't you stop people from driving? Because they're getting in a more dangerous weapon than a gun, having left the bar, you know? So it's where do we stop this as free citizens of a free nation? There has to be like a line of demarcation of like, yeah, guns are dangerous, but like, if you're gonna go through all this trouble to get one, odds are you're not gonna be like smoking a jay, leaving the jamies and being like, let's go to the range. You know, you're like, there's some level of stupidity that exists when people, but like, like Darwinism, like they'll weed themselves out. The, and, and with, with what he said to his training courses, this is actually very unique in gun ranges to offer such training courses. Typically, you have to go to Siggs Hour Academy in New Hampshire to get like, in, in detail training, because it is a very basic course to get your, requirement to get your permit or your carry permit. And if you have to, in, within the course, you have to watch videos and seventy percent of the videos are people shooting themselves trying to remove a gun out of a holster, because you, like you said, there's zero training in doing this. And I'm, I'm gonna throw a statistic out there that I'm making up, but like ninety percent of gun accidents happen with holsters. Whether it be a shirt caught in the thing, it pulls the trigger. And, and it happens to experienced, like experienced gun people, because it's just, like, things happen, but like with zero training on it, which they're, which they will offer, which is unique. A lot of gun ranges don't offer training, especially to the extent that they're saying with like the air guns and all that, like that's crazy cool. And, yeah, I guess that's it. So hopefully, hopefully you pass it, because I'd love to give my money to North Andover instead of Drake it. And I've already got a speeding ticket coming back from Drake it. Would, and just so Elaine hears this too, the gun range I go to is on thirty-eight, about twenty feet back, next to, in a strip shop, across the street from a Dunkin' Donuts. And no bullets have left the building yet. So just so you know.
Not thrown yet.
Just so you know. That's all.
Thank you very much. Jeff, bring more of him next month.
Yeah. Can I clone him?
Yes.
And I do need to just say, to his point, 'cause I did go through the Siggs Academy and I've gone through various certifications up there and I spent over eight hours and a thousand, you know, rounds just doing holster work. And what he's talking about is statistically what they've said are most of the errors. So you're not gonna be walking around, to your point on the process stuff, just walking around with guns. This whole, you know, things that you sign, two-page document, I think you're down in, I don't have it on the, I may even have it. The, what we sign of, you know, you're, you're holding safely, it's actually in a bin. You don't just walk around with it. It's unarmed, you have a plug in it. You need to take the plug out, you need to be standing in your, your specific space. So there's all sorts of processes that are around it. It's not just walking around.
I'll educate them.
Yeah.
One more little statistic. In North Andover, five people out of every one hundred have a license to carry. Just a little statistic there for North Andover. And a license to carry does not mean one gun, it means they could have three guns. So there could be a lot of guns in North Andover that when you say, how do I justify this? Odds are is a person's not gonna know. If they don't know it exists, like it's, you're not gonna be like, hmm, there's a gun range in town now. But my justification, if someone asked me, would be, it's a Second Amendment right that's afforded to us by the Constitution of the United States and that'd be like saying like, you can't get coffee anymore just because, you know, like, that's all.
Anything else, then, perhaps there is a motion, to continue, when's the next meeting?
January fourteenth.
January fourteenth.
I make a motion to continue this meeting to January fourteenth, assuming he signs all the proper time waivers.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Done.
All opposed? All, we are continued to January fourteenth. Thank you very much.
I was gonna be here. I, huh? You have to be here. I will make a point to be here. I don't care if I'm coming in in sweatpants, 'cause I'm still recovering from labor.
All right, there are two things, two things left on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is I just want to make mention to folks that next month there will be election for officers. I want to encourage any and everybody, if they're interested in stepping into an, an officer role, that would, I guess, you'd have to be a full member to be a-
Yeah.
Be, be one of those. But Ms. Jacobs and I've already traded emails with Ron. What I, what I am envisioning in the future is that this is, I, I don't want to be the chair forever, I don't even want to be the chair right now, quite frankly, but what I would like is for people to get comfortable on their way to a, in officer roles. That, in my, mind's eye, that means that somebody says, yeah, I want to do that, so that they become clerk, read the notices for a couple of years or a year, not a couple of years, a year, then would, somebody would ascend to the vice chair on their way to being chair. And whoever's vice chair, my, again, my vision is, is that the chair would ensure that there are opportunities for the vice chair to hear, to have hearings as the chair and therefore go through the, the processes of drafting the, or, you know, supporting the, the assistance, drafting of the notices and the drafting of the decisions and calendaring and all sorts of stuff like that, so that nobody has to step into the chairmanship cold like Ms. McIntyre did in the eighteen fifties.
So pretty much you just ask for your death wish.
So I am not, I am not saying that that's something that, that we need to start right now, but that is just what I would like to have happen so that we don't get into a position where a chair becomes a chair and the chair is institutional and nothing changes in the future. I don't think that's necessarily healthy for the operations of the board and so therefore not necessarily healthy for the operations of the town. Rational people can think differently. I'm just offering that as, you know, from, from this seat with this, this honorary gavel nonsense thing here, I would like to change the institutional elements of being the chairperson, change the institutional elements of being the zoning board. So with that in mind, Ms. Jacobs and I've already had a quick, quick email conversation with Ron to, to see if you, if you wanted to step into that kind of thing. There's nothing compulsory about this. The selectmen, I've had conversations with the selectmen, they don't necessarily want it to be compulsory either that people step into the officer role, but they would like to see the turnover. Ms. McIntyre thinks this is funny.
Because I can't stop looking at her.
You're looking at her belly is what you're looking at.
But you don't see her face.
Well, I-
She's doing-
Well, then it's coming for her first. I mean, that's, I threatened Doug, the chair was coming for him next, frankly.
Um, excuse me.
But Doug is long gone.
You're insane. No, 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 no. No, 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 no. I'm not taking on, you're, you're, no way. Don't even look to me to take on a role of a chair with this thing.
You don't have to, you're not gonna have that thing in three years. That thing is going to be a child.
Which is worse.
Someday. I, I've got kids. Ellen's got kids. Ellen, do you have any kids?
Apparently.
See?
No, I don't, one is.
You find a way, Ms. Jacobs.
Kids are self-sufficient.
You're interested in contributing to the community already. You've set the groundwork.
I, do I, you're saying I'm, I'm not contributing enough? Wow, and you know, here I was-
I'm saying there are opp, there are opportunities for additional contribution, Ms. Jacobs.
Are you looking to step down?
As, as soon as possible, yes ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That doesn't miss, doesn't mean right now.
That's so encouraging for others to want to take over.
After one year.
I was gonna say, would it have been a year?
Well, no, 'cause I know, I know it's going to be another year. I don't have any expectation. Mr. Kousha, are you interested in becoming the chair?
Absolutely not.
See, Ms. Kousha, Mr. Kousha doesn't want it. Ms. McIntyre said over and over again that she is not interested in returning to the chair. She is, she is the best vice chair on the planet because she can step in at any time, any place, any matter. What I would like is for there to be more opportunities for people to step in, anytime, anyplace, any way.
Well, this is only leaving-
By doing some training along the way. And that means let's get comfortable by being the secretary, by being the clerk, then get some comfort being the vice chair, maybe end up not becoming the chair, but at least you would be armed with the experience to step into the chairmanship if I got hit by a bus and Ellen were sick.
I would just resurrect you and put your brain in a jar.
That's really comforting. I don't think they got that technology yet.
Yeah, but, but that's sitting here looking that Ellen would step down.
Not a problem.
Not helping.
And, I mean, and you, my suspicion, my suspicion is that Ellen may say that as well.
Can I volunteer? I volunteer to relinquish my title.
No, 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 we're not, we're not, we're not.
So if you're not here next January, 'cause you're giving birth, be wary.
Oh, no, I'm here. I mean, I'm, listen, I'm coming if that kid's still attached by the umbilical cord.
You will be voted in as chair if you are not present.
Listen.
And remember, the entire board votes for officers. They may not be eligible for the officership, but everybody votes.
Everyone votes. I, I'm well aware, 'cause I remember we, we made that argument in the last one. I will come in if this kid is being dragged by the umbilical cord and I'm in my pajamas, so help me God, I will not be missing this one.
Another very pleasant image for us, resurrected brains and umbilical cords. Well, everybody on TV, how do you like that?
Okay, I mean, I'm not, I'm-
Never a cover charge.
Was there a discussion of whether or not?
This is not arm twisting.
Um, no, no, I'm not.
This is not arm twisting at all.
I understand where you were coming from and-
So take a month, think about it.
And if it's not twenty-twenty, then perhaps it's twenty-twenty-one. And again, it does not, you don't have to step right into the horse manure that this is.
I would probably leave before I would step right into the chair. It's horrifying. I mean-
Well, you know what?
I'd rather give birth.
Hey, fellas, who's interested? She falls off the earth, all of a sudden there's a slot, come on in. All right, so that's all, we don't have to beat, beat a dead horse, it's just kind of food, food for thought. And again, change, change comes at a glacial pace in every organization, let alone in a municipal board. So with that, unless there's anything else?
Uh, we have this.
Happy to hear. I was-
Go on to notification.
The notification, yeah.
We got in our, gold, the certified mail for the Merrimack Condominium, unit F-three.
Yep, I'll be, it's my assumption that this went to town council as well. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what to do with this. Essentially, this is a, an affordable housing unit that the, the town keeps an interest in, in order to ensure that it remains affordable for whatever, however long the period is. So if somebody doesn't pay their condo fees or they seek to sell the unit, then a notice has to come to the town. We are one of the people who gets these notices. It's not clear to me that this went to all of the other appropriate places, but I'm going to be, I'm gonna make sure that this gets to town council. Perhaps Merrill knows that it's already made it there. Merrill's nodding her head, so it's, it's already made to town council. I would have no expectation that anything comes of this, 'cause the, the town will be in a position to, you know, would have the right to buy the unit. Town's under the business necessarily of buying the units.